I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission May 27, 2025, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the April 29, 2025, regular meeting, and May 13, 2025 workshop. Entertained motion?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. There are no public comments this evening that I'm aware of, so we'll move on to item number three. Final plat Arbor Ridge, Section 9A, 44 lots on 22.41 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located at Waldron Road, Tax Map 32, part of parcel 4.04, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Brookfield Holdings Arbor LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is request for final plat approval. This is Arbor Ridge, Section 9A, and you can see on the screen, this is at the very back of the Arbor Ridge development, next to the Towne Smyrna. And zoom in, you can see the blue outline here of the site. So this phase is proposing 44 new residential lots, and this is about 22.4 acres total. The zoning map, this is PDR, of course, Plan Density Residential, and it does have the R1 base density. And these are photos of the existing homes and existing streets as they continue to build This photo here, Waldron Road, is up at the top of this hill. So it's there at the main entrance at the sign for the subdivision. So this area, again, this is 9A, Section 9A, in the rear. Zoom in there. You can see this is the way the lots are being arranged. They do have Buffalo Court, then Jasmine Way, and Carnation Drive is over here on the right Then this is Common Area H that's shown on the next sheet. And then the remaining part of Common Area H. So I don't believe there's any staff comments left from any departments. All the sidewalks are shown on each side of all the new streets, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Just one question if you had the applicant's department.
Does the applicant hear this evening? If you would come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Gao Ahmed, SEC.
So on Jasmine Way and Carnation Drive, will we be having a turnaround for emergency vehicles? I mean, obviously, it's going to be stubbed in row, but...
Yes, sir. There'll be temporary turnarounds.
Questions, please? No further questions. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept is submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number four. Final plat Arbor Ridge, Section 9B, 38 lots on 12.69 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located on Waldron Road, Tax Map 32, part of parcel 4.04, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Brookfield Holdings Arbor LLC. Mr. Logan.
This request is also a final plat request, and this is Arbor Ridge, Section 9B. This section proposes 38 new lots on 12.69 acres. So back at the screen here, you can see this site where I'm pointing, and then the previous item is here to the south. So both of these sections of Arbor Ridge touch the Towne Smyrna. And then there's a zoning map again, so this is the upper northeast corner of this part, the back section of Arbor Ridge. And same photos. So this is the overall plan for the huge development. This is the 9B where I'm pointing, Section 9B. Excuse me. So this is, again, 38 lots proposed. You can see how they're arranged on this sheet. This is the rest of Jasmine Way and then the remaining part of Carnation Drive.
And there's no staff reports remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a representative here for this project? If you don't mind, sir, once again, name and address.
Good evening, Gao Ahmed, SEC. 815 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Beau, can you pull up page 52 and 53 of the, of this portion?
Yes, sir.
Looking at Section 9B, on 52, Monaco Drive appears to be a stub street going straight into a property lot, but 53 has it with a hammerhead turnaround. So it seems to be a little bit of confusion as to...
The Monaco Drive?
Yes.
So this design is consistent with the PDR. There was discussions about connecting this road before, but then, at the time of the PDR, the decision was to basically stop this road here with the hammerhead for the emergency vehicles. It's consistent with the PDR, and that's how this was approved before. So if I wasn't there at the time of the PDR approval, but from me talking with my colleagues, it was the, if, and I'm probably saying this right, it was the neighbors and homeowners' discussion not to make this connection to prevent traffic going into the existing subdivision, and that's why the PDR was approved, specifically with this layout to provide the hammerhead.
Okay, because 52, which Beau, if you go up one page, doesn't show the hammerhead on there.
Which one?
That one right there. Zoom into Section 9B, if you don't mind, Beau.
Yeah, this is just an overview about the subdivision, but it's not how the layout is laid. This is just the cover sheet, but if we need to change it, we can. It's just a line that we can draw to match this. But what, what is being recorded is the second sheet after this one to be consistent with the PDR.
Okay, so we are getting the hammerhead.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, hammerhead built for the street standards and right-of-way dedication.
Okay.
Any further questions?
So all, all the homes are billable lots in, in 9A, 9B, correct? They're all, they're all buildable, so you can...
They're all buildables. All the lots are buildables, except for the open space. It's not buildable.
Any further questions? Entertained motion?
Thank you.
Make motion to approve is submitted.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number five. Final plat Arbor Ridge, Section 12, 65 lots on 16.23 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located on Waldron Road, Tax Map 32, part of parcel 4.04, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Brookfield Holdings Arbor LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this item is the request for final plat approval at Section 12 of Arbor Ridge. So same development, and this time, we're moving up to Waldron Road. So this is touching Waldron Road. This is a three-way stop where I'm pointing at Lake Road and Waldron, and this is Rock Springs Elementary School with the white roof. So zooming in, pretty much just shows all the earth-moving work that's been done and grading. And again, this is zoning map, so PDR zoning is the same, and same photos as well. So on this overall map, you can see again, we're talking here next to Waldron Road. And then this is sheet, or the first sheet for the layout, so you can see they have two, two roads shown that run north. It's Wild Daisy Way and Nostalgia Way, and then Cow Slip Way runs east and west. And there's Common Area also at the rear of lots 504 through 521. And then this is the other sheet that shows the remaining lots, and they're along Snowdrop And then this large area, Common Area C, is at the south end of the property. The North Arrow here is pointing to the left, so it's not, not in its usual direction. And all the staff comments have been addressed, so that's the end of the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? No questions. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion accepted, submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number six. Site plan Chase Bank, new building of 3,333 square feet on 2.26 acres requested by Kimley Horn. Property located at 101 Floyd Mayfield Drive, Tax Map 14, Parcel 72.1, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Chase Bank. Mr. Logan.
So this applicant is requesting site plan approval for a Chase Bank, and it would be constructed at the corner of Floyd Mayfield Drive and Murfreesboro Road, as you can see here in the middle of the image. And this site also has a plat on the agenda tonight for a subdivision, so this property would be subdivided into two lots. The Chase Bank will be on the corner, and then the Starbucks is proposed to go on the second lot. So the zoning is commercial, C2. And then these are photos of the site. So this is Floyd Mayfield Drive here in the full ground, and then the site is over here in the grassy area. And then this photo, you can see the businesses along Murfreesboro Road in the distance. And again, this is Floyd Mayfield pavement. This is the layout that's proposed for the new Chase Bank, and you can see Starbucks here to the northwest. This Chase Bank is proposed to be 3,333 square feet. And zoom in here. So they are showing a drive-through, of course. This drive-through is attached to the bank. The fifth third last month had a remote drive-through that was not attached. But you can see the arrows indicate the traffic flow, so one would be able to enter from this common access between the Starbucks and, and Chase. And then, if you look at the top of the screen, this is the main ingress, egress off Floyd Mayfield Drive. They can enter the site and then go left, or they can continue straight on towards Starbucks. The parking is sufficient and meets the city's requirements, actually exceeds the city's requirements, and dumpster enclosure is shown here at the top. And they also are showing the required sidewalk on Murfreesboro Road and along Floyd Mayfield. They, last, two weeks ago, last month, there was a discussion, or excuse me, earlier this month, a discussion of the architectural materials for the exterior. The hard coat stucco does meet the city's requirements. It is in there, so there's no issue with them meeting the architectural requirements. And they did submit a materials board, and I believe that's at the podium. I'm going to move forward to these elevations. So here's the elevations that are proposed for the bank. So they have different colors of the hard coat stucco, and then they have a brick base, which is this darker brown color. And then they just have a few different colors, maybe four or five different colors of hard coat, hard coat stucco, ranging from the dark brown color to the, the light gray and then the beige color. There's no issue with the landscaping either, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Lied. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
The utilities' comments are just for information, but there is one I'd like to read into the record, and we discussed with the developer how they're going to get water and sewer access to those easements we talked about at the workshop that are two-foot outside, and they said that they will handle acquiring those easements at closing, which we understood the reasoning behind that. We just wanted to read into the record that no permits will be issued by the city until those easements have been acquired or they have changed their design to get utilities in Floyd Mayfield.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a representative here this evening? If you don't mind, sir, name and address for the record.
Yep. Nick Madonia, Tenley Avenue, Nashville.
And you are aware of these comments from Mr. Lied?
Yes.
Feel comfortable with them?
Yep. Yep, we're working with David and his group to make sure all that gets settled.
Thank you. Questions, sir?
Two questions. Mr. Logan, we're good with the architectural overlay for both frontages?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then for the engineer, the sidewalks will go to the property line? Is that correct?
That is correct. Are you, which sidewalks are you referring to?
Floyd Mayfield. Looks like it goes, at least on here, it's...
The one just north of the parking stalls?
I believe so.
Or the one that loops around?
This is just past your entrance and exit on Floyd Mayfield, very northern portion of it. Looks like it stops just short of it.
He's talking about up here.
You're on the right screen, Beau. Just zoom in.
Okay.
It looks like it's... Nope, nope, keep going across. There you go.
We'll, we'll take that to the property line. Yes, that'll go to the property line.
Okay. I'll make a, go ahead.
Logan, on the signage, did you review a signage package? I don't see it in here. The signage?
They have not. If it goes to Beau's, it'd be reviewed then.
So I presume where the white background is, that's where your logo's going to go? The white?
Where the white is going to go?
Your, your logo. I presume you're going to put a name on the side of the bank?
Oh, yes, that is correct. Yeah, we haven't submitted the signage package yet.
So if you look at that, back one, Beau, if you would, please. Back one more. Shows that one there. So, so your signage is going to go on top, top of the building there? Would that be correct where the white is?
So I believe our main logo, and Lucy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you go back one, it'll go above the main entrance there on the gray.
Okay.
Yeah. That'll be the main logo to the building, which that is facing west on the plans.
Of course, sir.
And I appreciate you working with us on the, the entranceway on, onto Floyd Mayfield, I think, given the three lanes there, that the 34 feet is a lot better for everyone involved.
Of course.
That'll make motion accepted, submitted.
Motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Howard, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number seven is deferred. Correct, Mr. Logan?
That is correct.
On to item number eight. Site plan, 314 retail building, new building of 9,750 square feet on 1.01 acres requested by Danny Wumble. Property located at 314 Old Nashville Highway, Tax Map 17D, Group B, Parcel 15. C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Good Brothers LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this is a, another site plan request for approval. This is 314 Old Nashville Highway. So this is right across from Jackson Station Apartments that, you can see where I'm pointing here. It's at the corner of Woody Thomas Drive and Old Nashville. So here you can see the existing house. It's a yellow house, two-story, and then there's a detached structure too, that you can see the roof here where I'm pointing. And this is zoned C2, which is this red color here. So it's zoned commercial already and has been for several years. So here's a photo of the front of the home as it faces Old Nashville Highway, and you can see the other structure to the left of the house, and then the, looks like mostly gravel driveway that's existing. And different angle, again, that's a primary house, and then the other two-story detached building. So they have submitted a materials board with samples, and this shows a rendering. You probably remember from the workshop, they're requesting to get approved for two phases in this site plan, so Phase One would be one commercial building, and then in Phase Two, they would build units two, three, four, and five. So the total square footage built out would be 9,750 square feet, but the, the first phase is only about 2,500 square feet. So this is the plan, overall site layout. So here you can see the five different suites that I mentioned a minute ago. So Phase One is on this, to the right in this photo, is suite number one, and then they're numbered two through five for Phase Two. And the parking is no issue. It meets the city's parking requirements. They are showing a storm guard treatment area along Old Nashville Highway. And then they have the dumpster enclosure is up here at the top where I'm pointing. And then they are showing a new sidewalk as well that would be installed along the frontage of both Woody Thomas and Old Nashville. And I believe, that completes the main part of the report, and I just wanted to go over the planning comments that are still, still on here. And basically, those revolve around that staff believes the best path forward is to not have the older buildings stay on the site while the new buildings are being constructed. And also, I did have a chance to talk with city attorney about the residential and commercial use, and so the current zoning ordinance doesn't allow, and I'm not sure that the future one allows it either, but the current ordinance does not allow these different types of uses to occur on the same lot. So once a commercial lot, which this has zoning, it's, it's, today, it's a legal non-conforming residence, because it's been a residence for 50, 60, 70 years. So it's legal non-conforming. Whoever owned it at one time got it rezoned to commercial, but the house is allowed to stay, but once we go over that threshold and begin construction for commercial development, then the residential use has to go away. It's just, there's nothing in the ordinance that allows it to, to do, to have the dual uses. So that's, that's in a nutshell, all the planning comments. So that completes that part. You, any comments?
Yeah, if you could go back to the site plan, please. The utilities' comments are for the developers' information only, just locations of utilities, make sure no one drills a hole in the side of the city water line. Because we don't like it when that happens. But one point I would like to make here is, is to the site plan.
Oh, back, okay.
Okay, that's good. Right here, and I've talked to the engineer about this, where the sidewalk cuts the corner through the, the private property, they would have to dedicate by deed an easement for us to maintain that.
That's all our comments.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a representative here this evening for this project? Name and address for the record, gentlemen.
Danny Wumble and Chandler Floyd, Wumble Associates, 216 Centerview Drive in Brentwood, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Have you seen these couple of comments?
I have. We, we'll be glad to deed an easement for the sidewalk, and we have been talking about the utilities, and we have agreed today that we'll pothole the water line, figure out where it is, figure out the depth of it. If it will require a revision to the drainage, then we'll work that, we'll do that revision. We'll provide all that at the pre-construction conference if it's needed. In other words, we'll do whatever staff engineers require us to do to protect the city's water line during this construction.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Wumble, where are we with the, I know we spoke at the, at the workshop about possibly surveying the property, and now we've got where the city planner has gotten with our city attorney where we can't have the house in a commercial use on the same parcel. And I know that was a, a big hang-up from the workshop. So is the, does the applicant want to do a survey on the property and go through that process, or are they looking at demolition? Or where, where are we at with that part?
Well, where, where we were with that, we thought the way that was left at the, at the workshop meeting was that the city attorney and, and the city was going to research whether there was going to be the possibility to do some type of development agreement to commit to a trigger point where the residential buildings would be, would have to come down. And what was discussed at the workshop was a range of time of something between six and nine months after first phase was completed and a tenant was moved in. So we hadn't heard any resolution to that, whether that was a possibility or not, so we were hoping that would be possible, and then, then the owner developer would commit to tear the residential improvements down at that time. From what I'm hearing tonight, it sounds like that rather than looking at that possibility of a development agreement to do that, what I'm hearing sounds like you're saying it's got to come down now before he builds or finishes building Phase One.
That's correct. That's correct. It does have to come down, so any, any commercial construction that takes place is going to necessitate the removal of that residence.
Okay. So that hadn't been communicated to us until tonight. So if that's the case, then let me ask my client to come up and see if he'd like to board some opinion on that.
Good afternoon.
Name and address.
Amin Zakir, 6007 West Fork Drive. In the first, I would like to thank God today, I received my second baby boy, which, which we're going to get, big, big family. I came here to United States, 2007, alone by myself. Now I have a wife, two kids. Even, even if, if I'm not able to finish this project, maybe my, my sons in the future could, could finish, could finish this. This is one of my dream. What I'm, what really I'm asking, I was serve, serve the Laverne community for almost 10 years. Mostly of the people sit here know me since I was working in the other store. I was work honestly, I was work everything right, even if I not, in 10 years, I not have any violation. So I don't know, I don't know the rules, why it's get tough in me. I try to help my community, also I try to help myself. What, what we try to build, it's a small convenience store for people, just serve the people in this street. They don't have to drive more, they don't have to make much traffic. more. They don't have to make much traffic. And what I asking, it's just from six to nine months. I have a loan in the, in the building, and there is, the bank, it's not gonna allow me to demolish the, the two building because the bank loaned me the money for just the building. He, he not loaned me the money for, for the land. So what, what I was asking, it's just six to nine months between first phase and the second phase. And honestly, honestly, I, this is one of my dream. I would like it to demolish right this morning, right this moment and build, build the stores. But the lot is empty already. I know the city have, have some rules about not, not mixing, not makes commercial with residential, but I just, I just need, need some allowance, need some, some mercy, you know? So that's, that's what I have. About, about if we can separate the lot, I, I, I have my brother. He, he unable to be here tonight. We have to back to Mr. Danny again to, to see what our status, if we not get approved for this, this plant, I will see if we can maybe divide the two lot. It's allow for me to divide the two lot and build one, one store and leave the, and leave the two houses. But still, still the two houses, it's gonna be ugly. The two houses, it's since 1935. We would like to make Old Nashville Highway, it's nice looking. I have the fire department across the street from us. I have the small apartment across the street from us. So what, what I'm asking, it's just six to nine months. The bank, the bank not deny me for the loan. The bank agree with the loan. The bank welcome with the loan. But this is, this is my, my, my whole point. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I wouldn't be opposed with this board deferring it a month. This would give the applicant and the engineer time to look at this. If they can come up with a workable submittal, then it can come back. And if they can't, they can always withdraw and resubmit before the next meeting. So that's, that, that would be my motion is to defer this, but.
Any further questions, Chris?
Just obviously, we, we had the rules and regulations, unfortunately. We had to deal with it. If we open Pandora's box up, as they say, you know, who knows what can happen. And I appreciate the applicant and the thoughts and the concepts. I just think we need to give them another month there to get things organized. You know what we're looking for, Mr. Wumble. You understand that.
I do. Will agree to that.
Any further comments?
Need to have a second.
I'll second the most.
We have a motion for deferral and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll see you in workshop. Thank you. Onto our next item. Item number nine. I'm sure that's correct. Item number nine. The Retreat at Finch Branch, Section Four, thirty-eight lots on 16.91 acres requested by SEC, Inc., property located on Greenwood Drive, Tax Map 17L, Group A, 8.08. R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Finch Branch Building Group, LLC. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for final, final plat approval at the Retreat at Finch Branch. And this plat, this is Section Four, and they're proposing thirty-eight lots on 16.91 acres. So let me zoom in here. So to give you a frame of reference, this is Irvin Road is up here where I'm pointing. And then this is Greenwood Drive up at the very top right. So Greenwood runs north and south, and Irvin basically east and west. So this is where Finch Branch, the first phases were built, and that's the existing homes. So to the bottom or the southwest is this blue outlined area, and then another one in the opposite, opposite side of the image. So these are the areas where we're talking about for Finch Branch, Section Four, and then the, the other section that's on there tonight. So this is on R2 Medium Density Residential, which is this darker red color. So this is a huge area of R2 in the middle of Laverne. And the zoning with these phases is not any different than the previous phases. This is the entrance sign, the brick sign that says the Retreat at Finch Branch. So this is existing at the Phase One, at the corner of Irvin and Greenwood Drive. And then these are the male kiosks in the distance where I'm pointing. This is a photo of the existing construction and grading that's going on. And then these homes are in the earlier phases, One and Two. They've been built out over the last four to five years. So let's see. So you can see this box on the left is labeled Sheet Three, and then the one to the right is Sheet Two. So those are the two areas that we're looking at. So this is that far right side on Sheet Two, and it includes Legion's Court and Blue Finch, or excuse me, Bull Finch Court. So it's kind of a hammerhead layout, and then these lots are arranged like so around Legion's Court. And then the other box, which is labeled Sheet Three, actually has the rest of Spring Street, and then Spring Street has a bulb here at this ninety-degree. It's a type of a cul-de-sac, and the cul-de-sac design called a bulb, and then the Spring Street turns around and goes back to the east. So all total, it's thirty-eight lots on about, about seventeen acres. And there's no staff comments remaining, so that completes the report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Chairman, can we get the representative, just to make sure these are all buildable lots is my question.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, sir, name and address one more time.
Good evening, I'm Ahmed, SDC, 815 Dultenancy Boulevard. Yes, all lots are buildable except for the common areas.
Thank you, sir.
One quick question. I'm looking at the different quotes for the, the top.
They're very, all over the place.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. They're kind of wild. I didn't know if you could address that because it looks like we're going anywhere from seventy-five thousand to almost half a million dollars.
Which one?
For the, for the different top coat for, it looks like for the streets.
Miss.
Can you, Mr. Logan, can you go to the bond, just so I know?
Yeah. House. House.
Gary to the rescue.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Can you tell me what's the question one more time?
Well, I'm just trying to understand the, the, it's anywhere from, it goes 480 to 101 to seventy-five thousand to 450. And so I'm just trying to, to understand why the huge swings there.
So the 480 is the total for paving. The bond is for the, just the topping layer, which is the one and a half inch.
Okay.
Satisfied, sir?
It's a total, yeah, it's a total paving bid here. So we just take the one and a half inch asphalt topping. That's what they're gonna leave.
Okay, yeah, I see it now on the other one.
Mr. Gary, would you like to touch on that?
Yes, sir. They, we reviewed these and two things. A, what Mr. Ahmed said is correct, but also we looked at the median cost to make sure that at least two of them were at or lower than what they used as their estimate. We used the higher between median and average. And then we took a look at that and compared it against other costs we're getting for similar projects around the city, and the 210,000 appeared correct.
Any further questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10. Final plat Starbucks, two lots on 2.26 acres requested by DMG LLC, property located at 101 Floyd Mayfield Drive, Tax Map 14P, Group B, Parcel Four, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Restaurant Retail Properties LLC. Mr. Logan.
Right. So this is the plat that will subdivide the lot that we talked about earlier tonight with the Chase Bank. So you can see it there on the screen, outlined in blue. And zooming in, you can see, in case you forgot, the bank, Chase Bank will be here on this corner closest to Floyd Mayfield, and then the next lot will be the Starbucks. So there's no zoning problem. Here's the photos. So this is Murfreesboro Road in the foreground, and you're looking north, north northeast toward the site. So Floyd Mayfield is over here as it comes up to the traffic signal. And then this is from Floyd Mayfield. And another angle from Floyd Mayfield. So you can see the large boulders that are out there today to keep trucks and other vehicles from parking. So these are the elevations for the proposed Starbucks. And this is the main entrance at the bottom. I have it backwards, sorry. This is the main entrance elevation at the top, and then this is the patio entry elevation at the bottom. And they are proposing a lot of brick on this building. So then this is the drive-through elevation. So the drive-through is here, and then this is the rear elevation at the bottom. Here's the dumpster enclosure. So the materials match, the building and enclosure match. So that meets the city's requirements. And this is the final plat. So Lot Two is gonna be roughly forty-two thousand, and that'll have the Chase Bank. That's forty-two thousand square feet and fifty-six thousand four hundred for the Starbucks. And I don't believe, is there any comments left? I don't believe so.
I have my one.
Oh, there is one comment, Mr. Lott. Thanks.
Okay, same as before. No permits will be issued by the city until easements have been obtained, providing access to the site, to the existing public water and sewer to the north, or failing that, the design is changed to access water and sewer and adjacent public rights of way, just for the record.
Thank you, sir. Representative for this project? Name and address, sir, if you don't mind.
David Abbey Development Management Group, 4209 Gallatin Pike, Nashville.
So you heard and
Yes, sir.
agree with Mr. Lott? We'll work through that. Any questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you, sir. We'll entertain a motion.
The final plat, I make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11. Site Plan Starbucks, new building of 2,500 square feet on 2.26 acres requested by DMG LLC, property located at 101 Floyd Mayfield Drive, Tax Map 14P, Group B, Parcel Four, C2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Restaurant Retail Properties LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. If anybody doesn't know where the Starbucks is going, please get with me after the meeting. I'm gonna skip over all of that. I don't think we need to see the photos five times. And I covered the elevation, so I'll skip that, too. Let's just go on to the site plan. This submittal was a little bit different in that the final plat was tucked into the site plan instead of two separate documents. So we just had to, we just had to find everything. So here we go. This is the layout that shows the Starbucks. So the building is 2,500 square feet proposed? Larger here. Okay. That'll work. So here's the 2,500 square foot building. They're showing the patio here on the Floyd Mayfield or the bank side. And then here's your queue. Queue for the vehicles in the drive-through, and then the drive-through window will be here on the northwest or the Nashville-facing side. So that's your drive-through window. And you can enter and exit down here from Murfreesboro Road with this ingress egressors, left and right turn lane going out, and then one lane in. And then, I know I covered it with the bank, but this driveway here also goes back to Floyd Mayfield, which allows customers to come in from Floyd Mayfield. So they can, they can enter the site from both, both roads. And then this is two-way traffic here in the front. There's two arrows here. So that two-way traffic continues on over and, of course, goes in front of the Chase Bank. And of course, they're showing for reference, this is the queue line for that drive-through at the bank, so. They are showing the five-foot landscape buffer, so there's no issue there, and the sidewalk is shown also on the Starbucks, so there's no issue there. And they have plenty of parking as well. And then the last, I went over the dumpster enclosure materials, but the dumpster for Starbucks is here where I'm pointing, and then this dumpster over here is for the bank. So they're close together up there on the rear of each building. Other than that, the lighting plan is fine, and landscaping plan is fine. So there's nothing, nothing left on planning. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jerry?
Yes, sir. Same comment as the others. Again, no, no permits will be issued until the easement and the water and sewer access is finalized. One thing I do want to point out, Bo, if you could go to page 252 of 274 or C 8.0. Just wanna, we went over this at workshop, and just wanted to kind of go over it again real quick.
C 7.9,000.
All right. And again, this, we are going to be losing that Excel lane here on Murfreesboro Road in here as it comes off of Floyd Mayfield, and that was absolutely mandated by T-DOT. So they were adamant on that. So I don't think there's any, any wiggle room on that. Just wanted to make sure everybody's clear that that's gonna go away with this, this construction.
Yes, sir.
And it's under this contract that they're actually gonna build the sewer. So, Mr. Mayor, these might be the people you want to make sure say is gonna build the sidewalk up to the property line.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board? Could we have a representative on this item, if you don't mind, sir?
David Abbey, DMG, 4209 Gallatin Pike, Nashville.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Would you like to address that with sidewalk?
Yes, sir. We're good. We will take care of that.
So it'll be built up to the property line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did we get a materials board on this?
Yes.
Okay. Bo, where is this gonna be at?
It's in Laverne. Somewhere around town.
Very nice. Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
I should have a question for the city staff. Do we have the agreement or the document for the shared driveway? Do we have, because we discussed that at the workshop. I want to make sure that we have a agreement, so we're not arguing.
We can get the copy of it that's currently out for signature.
Just want to make sure we, we put it in the packet, so we have that in hand.
Thank you, sir. We do not have it yet. So we'd appreciate getting a copy.
We can definitely get a copy that's out for signature.
Any further questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Welcome to Laverne.
Item number 12. Final plat, The Retreat at Finch Branch, Section Three, forty lots on 20.75 acres requested by SEC, Inc., property located off Spring Street, Tax Map 17L, Group A. I'm gonna assume that's Parcels 8.08. Is that correct, Mr. Logan? R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Finch Branch Building Group, LLC. property owned by Finch Branch Building Group, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So, this is final plat request for Finch Branch, and this is Phase Four. And they're proposing, excuse me, this is Section Three. They're proposing 40 lots on 20.75 acres. So, I know we went over it earlier. This is Irvin and Greenwood Drives. And so, Irvin and Greenwood is where this development started with Phase One. And that's where the picture is of the entrance sign. So, these phases are all the way at the back, and they back up to the, this large blue area, which is I2 heavy industrial zoning. So, they're pretty much on three sides, have industrial warehouse and distribution parks around them. But you don't necessarily know it when you're out there because there is a lot of buffer and landscaping with mature trees that cut off a lot of that sightline and noise that you might expect. So, this picture here is of the road and the box culvert that's under construction. And those are the existing homes, of course. So, for Section Three, they have Sheet Three and Sheet Two. So, this is the dividing line in your packet between the sheets. But more or less, these are also being built along Spring Street. Get more detailed here. So, this shows the lot arrangement. But the existing Spring Street is here, here right. So, you can see with the dotted line, this is where they're extending out Spring Street. And then, curving it around for Lots 227 through 223. And then, Shiloh Drive will extend to the south and meet the other area of Shiloh Drive. So, this is the last sheet here, and you can see Greenwood. So, this is existing homes that are already built. And then, this is the, where they're extending Purple Finch Court across the creek. So, this is the creek that runs roughly through the middle of this image. So, this is all south of the creek, of course, all the new lots that are being approved with this plat. So, there is one more cul-de-sac here, Hall Finch Court. I think that's got all their streets. And there's no, I don't believe there's any comments left on this item either. So, that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We have a representative here. Name and address one last time, sir.
Good evening. I was Ahmed S. C., 815 Del Tennesse Boulevard, Murfreesboro.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
Lot 219, is that a buildable lot? And are the rest on buildable lots?
Yeah, seems to be a buildable lot that would fit a small product.
And then, just for the staff and the applicant, you know, let's please ensure that when we go to sign these documents that the review purposes only is removed.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Approval is submitted.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And item 13, Bonds and Letters of Credit Update.
Good evening, commissioners. You should have the updated bond list in front of you. There is one that is being renewed probably by this coming week. So, that's all we've got.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Thank you, everyone, for your time. Meeting adjourned.